Welcome to Thursday. I am Jessica Chung here in the CBC Vancouver newsroom. You're watching CBC News BC. Okay, let's get to your top stories this morning. We're going to start in Washington DC. Where officials say there are no survivors after a mid-air collision between a passenger jet and a military helicopter near Reagan Washington National Airport. Now more than 65 people were on board the two aircrafts. And first responders say 28 bodies have been recovered from the Potomac River so far. Now investigators will focus on why the American Airlines plane and the US Army helicopter crashed during an otherwise normal flight. And Ottawa says it's not aware of any Canadians killed in the crash. But Prime Minister Justin Trudeau has offered his condolences, saying to the American people, Canadians are mourning with you. Now back to BC, police are investigating a fire that killed one person at a homeless camp in Langley. Now officers were called to the camp just before five this morning where they discovered the body. And Langley RCMP say they are trying to determine the circumstances that led to the death of the person. Police, fire, and BC Coroner Service are all investigating. And mayors of Canadian cities near the US border are uniting to better deal with the threat of US tariffs. Now the Border Mayor's Alliance say they want to act as a voice for communities that could deal with the impacts firsthand.
Potential tariff would disrupt tens of thousands of jobs across Canada and the US, particularly in vital sectors like manufacturing, agriculture, and technology. With over 75% of Canada's exports flowing to the United States, it is clear that maintaining open and fair trade channels is of the utmost importance.
And the province has set up a new cabinet committee as a response to the threat of terrorists from the US. Premier David Eby says he formed it to protect BC's economy. And the new Chair Minister Ravi Kalan says he has little time for Donald Trump's suggestion that Canada becomes the 51st state to avoid levies.
The biggest challenge that leaders across the country are having is trying to figure out why this is even happening. First, it was told to us that it was because fentanyl was crossing the border. We heard second from them that it was trade imbalances. Well, the only reason why there's a trade imbalance is because they need our oil. And it helps them produce low-cost items. And then lastly, we've heard it's territorial expansion. And there's no way in hell that Canada is becoming the 51st state of the US.
And Kalan says the province is looking at a number of steps to ease the economic impact. That includes bulking up our local economy and identifying new markets to diversify our trading partners. And get ready for some winter weather. Environment Canada issued a series of special weather statements for BC's South Coast, saying wintry conditions are expected to set in today and stretch into next week. And the agency also issued a rainfall warning for parts of Metro Vancouver and the Fraser Valley, saying up to 50 millimeters of rain could fall by late tomorrow night. And at higher elevations, that could come down as snow. And that's it for me. I am Jessica Chung. You are watching CBC News BC. Of course, stay tuned for more continuous local coverage. NBC Today is next, so don't go anywhere. Good afternoon. Thank you for joining us. The provincial government has fired the Victoria School Board, and partly over the contentious issue of police liaison officers. We'll bring you that story up first. And on the open line is mobility pricing or traffic tolling the solution to traffic congestion? And a cash-strapped TransLink, New York's new congestion pricing appears to be on thin ice despite signs it's working. Should BC revisit the idea? We'll talk to former councillor for Vancouver Gordon Price and a Surrey Board of Trade. And we want to hear from you on the open line. I'm Michelle Elliott. Welcome to BC Today. BC's Education Minister Lisa Baer has just announced that she's fired the Victoria School Board. There have been increasing tensions over the school board's decision to remove police liaison officers from schools. CBC reporter Catherine Marlowe joins us now from Victoria. Hi Catherine.
Hi, Michelle.
Well, tell us, this announcement was just made just about an hour ago? What did the minister have to say?
Well, you know, she said that her, the thing that she is most worried about is student safety. And that's what she was keeping in mind, that this was a decision she didn't take lightly. But this isn't just about police liaison officers. She said it was a cumulative effect. There were a number of concerns. Most recently, the fact that the school board didn't satisfy the ministerial orders that had been given to them over the past few months to create these safety plans the school board, the province wanted. But also that they've been hearing concerns from parents who said they would go to the board with concerns and that they were ignored. And also from police chiefs and especially local First Nations who said they did not have a good working relationship with the board and that they didn't see that changing.
Can you take us back? How did this begin a few years ago?
Sure. So, you know, obviously, this was not the only school board to be thinking about relationships with police. This would have been post George Floyd, when a lot of these conversations were happening. And so the previous board, this is before the last election, did sit down and undertake a review. They spent a few years talking to people. They did a survey. They made a decision finally in June 2023 to cancel the program. And then last year, we started hearing concerns from parents who were asking for the program to be reinstated. And then police chiefs. There's actually four different police departments that cross the jurisdiction of the schools served here. And they spoke up and said that they were concerned, that they didn't have a good relationship with the school board, and that they were seeing increased concerns about gang violence and student safety and that they needed to be able to have a better working relationship. And things really sort of escalated throughout the summer. And then in September, the previous education minister basically required the board to come up with a safety plan. And then several of those plans have been rejected, and here we are today.
Okay. It sounds certainly like there are differing points of views on this. Who else have you heard from?
Well, you know, we haven't heard any from any response to this news so far because it's just broken. But we do know, as I said, First Nations and police and city councils were all calling for the board to build a better relationship with police and with community. And in fact, we'd heard from First Nations that at this point, they felt like they couldn't have a relationship, that this was going against the spirit of reconciliation, the way the board was treating with them. Again, I mentioned that there were parents groups who had said that they were concerned about not being able to have police in schools. But there are, of course, as well, the parents who would like police to stay out of schools and feel like, you know, they voted for this board democratically and now that this board has lost their power. So they will be concerned as well. The Greater Victoria Teachers Association and the District Parent Advisory Councils also said that they were with the board and did not want the board to be fired because that was undemocratic. So they all said that earlier this month when we were starting to read the tea leaves about what the final decision might be here.
Right. And here it is today. Now, you mentioned that the alternative safety plans that have been put forward have not been enough for the province. Why is that?
You know, there's not a lot of, I think people are looking for really black and white. It should have this and it doesn't, or it shouldn't have this and it does. We didn't get anything like that. In fact, the minister said that this is not about a specific program, maybe not even about reinstating school liaison officers. It is about having a better relationship with police, having a working relationship with police, and having police in schools. And one of the things we heard from a special advisor who had been appointed in the fall to help work with this was that, you know, there just wasn't enough collaboration on the writing of these safety plans. So that's one of the first jobs that the new trustee who has been appointed will have is to finish creating that safety plan and submit it next month.
As you mentioned Catherine, these debates have happened in other jurisdictions in Vancouver. Similar concerns from marginalized groups and students about the presence of school liaison officers. That program was halted for years. It is back now with new parameters, including that officers will wear less formal uniforms, for example. What does the minister want to happen next?
You know, again, she, I asked her specifically today, are you saying there need to be school liaison officers in the schools? And she said, no. What she is saying is that they need a relationship with police and that it is up to the new trustee who was appointed. Her name is Sherry Bell, as well as the special advisor Kevin Godden, who was appointed in November or December to work on this, for them to come up together to come up with a new safety plan that does satisfy her. Kevin Godden, the special advisor who had been working on that plan, had come up with plans that she said, you know, a lot of the work has been done. The board had rejected those plans, which is part of the conflict here. And so probably we'll see that new safety plan in the next month. And then we'll get a better sense of what the future is like for school district 61.
It certainly is a complex story Catherine. Thank you so much for taking us through these details.
You're welcome.
That's the CBC's Catherine Marlowe live in Victoria. And again, the province has fired the Victoria School Board. And lots more on this story throughout the day here on CBC. And on radio, you can hear more, of course, this afternoon on Old Points West with Jason D'Souza. It's 12 minutes after 12 o'clock now. And for our listeners in the Metro Vancouver region, here's what's coming up on On the Coast.
Michelle, hi there. It's Gloria Makaranko here. And I wanted to flag a few things lined up for On the Coast this afternoon. You'll get more reaction to Mayor Ken Sims' plan for the downtown east side, which calls for pausing all supportive housing projects. So you'll hear how that's resonating with people who live in the area. You'll also hear about a student film out of Argyle Secondary School. It's being screened. And it's a thriller all about a game called Gotcha, where graduating students play a school-wide game of elimination tag until there's just one person left standing. Join Amy Bell. She'll be hosting this afternoon between 3:00 and 6:00 for On the Coast.
Gloria, looking forward to that. Now, the other day here on the program, we asked you whether renting may actually be a better financial decision than owning a home. And we talked to financial author Jessica Morehouse. We got some emails here. Janet writes, "The best thing I ever did was buy a condo. I am mortgage-free and I have a nice nest egg for retirement." And David writes, "As a long-term renter, I find that BC and Canadian politicians frequently refer to the dream of home ownership as if everyone wants to or will have the ability to buy a home. This is a misplaced priority and partially resulting in the current housing crises across Canada. Having lived in places in Europe where renters have more rights, better rent control and unit rent control, and stronger public co-op or nonprofit rental housing options, I feel that the misplaced focus on homeowners or home ownership above anything else is problematic. We need to protect existing rental stock and build more new stock, including government-supported." Thank you very much, David and Janet, for your emails. Our email address is BCtoday@cbc.ca. Quarter after 12 o'clock now Pacific time. This is BC Today. I'm Michelle Elliott. Thanks for being with us. A lot of news this week around transit funding. And this was after news that there was new federal funding for capital projects for TransLink, not for ongoing operations, however. So lots of reaction coming in to that. And what more is needed to fund transit and transportation in the region? Well, we're looking at congestion pricing. And there's a new program in New York City that imposes congestion pricing on some areas in the downtown core. It may be short-lived, though. Now, this is a city tolling program began just weeks ago on January 5th. And here's how it works. Drivers pay up to $9 US a day to enter Manhattan south of Central Park during peak hours. And with plans to reinvest that revenue that's generated back into transit infrastructure. And there have been some findings that it is easing congestion. But US President Donald Trump has vowed to pull federal authorization for that pricing plan. Now, here in Metro Vancouver, this is all very familiar. A congestion pricing scheme has long been considered, not been implemented, though. And when it comes to tolls, the tolls on the Portman Bridge, you'll recall, were removed by the NDP when it formed government in 2017. So we're asking you now, do you think we should revisit congestion pricing here in BC? How would it work? And could it be used for other parts of the province? You can call us 1-800-825-5950 604-669-3733. You can also just hit pound 690 on your cell phone. And you can, again, email us, BCToday@CBC.ca. Joining us now is Gordon Price. He's a former Vancouver City councillor and TransLink board member and former head of the city program at Simon Fraser University. Hi Gordon, thanks for joining us.
Hi, Michelle. I've got a fun fact for you to begin with.
Sure.
It's 50 years ago that Singapore started the first congestion pricing system in the world.
Ah, and how is it going?
Well, grave in Singapore, there are about a dozen other cities that have done it in some form, which is not a lot. It's something that actually does deliver what it promises, which tells you that it is, well, let's say it's politically toxic. And as a consequence, we aren't going to see a lot more examples like that.
Well, in North America, the one example, the first example would be New York, which happens to be the most congested when it comes to transportation and traffic. You called it politically toxic. I was going to say politically radioactive because what mayor is going to touch it right now?
Well, some mayors would, if, you know, like New York, they have the conditions that would allow it. But the suburban politicians and those who represent them in federal, provincial, state, whatever, no, they're not going to go there.
Why do you think we should think about this now? We've heard, you know, on plebiscites, on added taxes for transportation. We've heard the public say, no, we don't want it. Why do you think we should revisit it now?
Oh, because we love it.
Do we?
Yeah, sure, we love Skytrain. Oh, my goodness.
We love the services that could be funded through it.
Well, and the kind of city you get as a result. Yeah, just in Bangkok, speaking of other Asian cities, you know, they built Skytrain after we did, and they shaped their city around it. These are vibrant places. They really work. So we love the results. What we don't like is a visible tax to pay for it. Particularly if it involves a car, which emotionally is a freedom machine, always has been raised that way, advertised that way. That's what makes it so politically difficult. But here's the thing, you don't need to do that. You don't have to have the old-fashioned congestion pricing system. Even the one New Yorkers installed is, I would say, very 20th century. Look to the way that you now, or many of us, get around. And probably for many, it's things like Uber or some form where you do pay, but it's kind of seamless.
Like Carshare or something like that, yeah.
Yeah, and it's as invisible as possible. So that's my first advice. Hide it. One of the arguments for this is that people will become aware of what it actually costs. They don't want to know that. What is needed is cash flow. The federal government will help us with capital costs. That's where the province likes to come in too. You know, cut the rhythm. That's great. We will get capital dollars, but as TransLink has said, it's operating costs that kill us. So we need a regular guaranteed form of cash flow. And that in some form, whether you call it congestion pricing or not, is what these new technologies will allow us to do.
I see. Okay. Let's take a call here, Gordon. I really appreciate. I know you've taken time out of your lunch break to talk to us, so really appreciate your time. Former Vancouver City councillor and TransLink board member Gordon Price joins me now, asking you, should we revisit the idea of congestion pricing or mobility pricing? How do you think it would work? Is it a different picture now than from, say, 2015, when we had that plebiscite over added taxes to fund transportation? Are we in a different world now? As you heard from Gordon Price, there's new technology, new ways of getting around and new ways to perhaps structure that pricing? Or is it still, as we said, as he said, politically toxic? And can the public still, would the public actually be on board? You can give us a call, 1-800-825-5950 604-669-3733. You can hit pound 690 on your cell phone. Would you pay mobility pricing yourself to get around Metro Vancouver? I'd love to hear from you. Rob is calling us from Vancouver now. Hi, Rob.
Hello.
Hi. What are your thoughts on congestion pricing?
First of all, I wish we would just do better funding for transit. But if we're going to do any kind of government fee like this, they need to be scaled to income. And we don't do that enough. Like with MSP, it was like, there was only two scales, right? Or two rates. It was either you were below a certain amount and you paid nothing, or you made above a certain amount and it was, what, $1.25 a year? So for wealthy folks, it's fine. They afford congestion pricing, no problem. But then people that make less, it's more significant out of their budget. And I think wealthier people can, wealthier people can tend to live closer to downtown. And people that make less money, they live further out. And they're already driving and spending money on gas or transit, so yeah.
Okay, so income-tested.
Yeah, and not just like, oh, you make below this and it's free, or you make above this and it's this flat rate. Like it should actually be kind of the same, whatever brackets we have for income tax should be the same.
Okay, a scale. For yourself, how would this apply to you in terms? And, you know, how would it apply to you perhaps seeing improved transportation and transit, Rob?
Oh, if it were to fund better transit, that's good.
Yeah, you'd benefit from that.
Yeah, everybody would, yeah.
Okay. Rob, thank you very much. So the call there for, yeah, great to hear from you. Let's hear now from Eric in Nanaimo. Hi, Eric. What are your thoughts on mobility pricing? Should we revisit it?
No, I don't think we need to revisit that. We already pay our taxes through ICBC. Everything is a subscription service these days. I don't think that we need to subscribe to go into our own cities.
Uh huh. Subscription service, like streaming services and things like that. What about the idea, Eric, that, you know, with less fuel taxes going to TransLink, to road and infrastructure, that there needs to be a way for TransLink to make up the costs?
I feel like fuel taxes were in place for the environment, not so much to build extra income for other projects and whatnot. I view it more so for productive, for environmentalism, sorry. No, I think TransLink needs to pay their CEOs less.
Okay, so it's about compensation for the executives and on.
Yeah, they're already being compensated with our tax dollars enough.
Eric, great to hear from you in Nanaimo. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's Eric in Nanaimo. What do you think, Gord? What do you think of what you were hearing?
Well, you know, we do have a form of congestion charging that becomes a default one. Continue to use it. And that's time. We won't charge you, but you will line up. And you'll see the congestion get worse. You can make your own decision as to whether you wish to be in it or not. Now, we actually have a pretty effective way of doing that. We call them bridges. And certainly for Vancouver, it works pretty well. You get four or five bridges. You keep the capacity to the level that your street system can handle. It's all free, but you pay through time.
That's an interesting way of looking at it, the cost of time. Let me put to you the comment from the CEO of TransLink, as you know, as we've just heard, that perhaps there should be less compensation and look at the remuneration for executives there. But Kevin Quinn was asked this week about the idea of mobility pricing. Here's what he had to say.
So there's no plans right now to institute mobility pricing in this region at this time that is not supported by the mayor's council. I think folks are closely watching what's going on in New York as they've implemented that. But as of right now, that's not a solution that's on the table.
So putting that idea out, yes, nothing it out pretty quickly. How do you convince those mayors? How do you convince the TransLink board that this is an idea they should think about?
Oh, well, you don't. They've made their decision.
Right, yeah.
There's no ambiguity there.
Yeah.
No, but they're looking around for another source of funding. And let's make this really important distinction. I think they will get the capital dollars they need, but what is the cash flow going to be that will allow you to operate the system? You know, and one of them will clearly be passenger fares. That's always been there.
Or reduced service, as TransLink keeps saying, because it's threatening, right?
Yeah, I don't see that.
No.
Yeah, no, because that just leads to other problems that become even more politically, let's use the word again, politically toxic. Yeah, no, that would have an immediate impact. People would feel very strongly about that. And we would look around for something that would allow the system to continue at least to function at current levels. And let's acknowledge, we do have one of the best. We never acknowledge it, but it's really good. And I'm talking about the bus transit system of all kinds. And we love it. We do love it. And so there is, I think, an emotional capacity there that we can cash in on.
Okay, so you're saying all the talk that we do hear from TransLink, that, you know, if they don't get this $600 million hole in the operating budget, that things like the West Coast Express might be at risk and that kind of thing?
Well, it won't be at risk. But yeah, there will definitely be adjustments to the level of service. And it will be difficult. But that, you know, that's a fair factor to take into account. You do want to set your priorities according to need. You can always, and should be in an ongoing way, looking at really what, where are you going to put those limited dollars to give people the best service that you can? You'll never, ever reach a point where people will be satisfied. But you won't be cutting it back to the point where the pain is really highly visible. That would even be worse than putting in a congestion charge.
Let's take a call now from Sheena in Victoria. Hi, Sheena.
Hello, Happy New Year.
Yes, thank you very much. Happy Lunar New Year to you. Thanks for calling in today. What are your thoughts on congestion pricing?
Well, the idea of congestion pricing is kind of looking at it the wrong way. It's congestion control. It's not supposed to be about raising money for public transit. It's supposed to be about reducing the number of cars in the city and reducing air pollution.
It can be both, yeah. I mean, that's what New Yorkers see.
It can be both, but it shouldn't be both. Once again, then the wealthy can afford it. What it should be is what they do in London very successfully. If your license plate ends in an odd number, you're allowed in the city on odd-numbered days. If your license plate ends in an even number, you're allowed in the city on even-numbered days. They've been doing it for a long time and it works very, very well. But public transit should be publicly owned and publicly funded. It should not be private for-profit corporations. And this is a bizarre BC thing. I'm from the east and it's all publicly owned and publicly run there. So that needs to be sorted out also.
Sheena, thanks very much for the call. It's Gordon. Yes, your reaction?
It's all publicly owned here.
Yeah. So but I guess the way it's run, is it, you know, having a CEO in terms of having, is any of it sort of privately run in terms of, yeah, the way it is operated, rather? Sort of like BC Ferries, I guess.
Yeah, we do contract for some services.
Yeah.
But the system is public.
Is that a, is that, is that a concern? Like, does it become a concern the more you source out, the more you outsource services?
Well, some things can be effectively, you know, contracted, but by and large, you have the system that the accountability is to the public bodies, to the elected boards.
Okay. Right, yeah. The TransLink board, of course. And so, Gordon, it sort of feels a little bit like an intellectual exercise that we're having here, right? Because as you heard from Kevin Quinn, this is not on the table right now. We're looking at New York. We have heard from various experts who say we should be looking at New York as an example. And, you know, we know that there has been some talk from the new president, Donald Trump, that he's not a fan of that congestion pricing in New York City. So where should this conversation go now? Because that need for expanded transit is still there.
Oh, well, a multitude of different options, sources. That's basically what happened after the referendum failed. You sit down, you go through a number of things, you look at this, a bit of that. But the main thing I would say, highest priority, let's get the rapid bus system in place. That would be the biggest advancement we could make. We'll be talking about another Skytrain line in a decade or so. But in the interim, what would make the biggest difference, get the funding for that, is the already planned effective system to put in place really good bus service. Poor old bus doesn't get the credit it deserves. But for us, it's really key. Basically, it's our only option.
We are going to hear about a need for rapid transits along King George Highway in Surrey in just a moment from the Surrey Board of Trade.
Oh, great.
So more of a call for that.
Ten of them that they can move forward with pretty quickly. There'll be debate over allocation of space, as we see on Hastings Street, but that's the small stuff. It's having that big vision. We've got it. When we do it, it works and we love it.
Gordon, great to speak with you. It's been a little while since I've heard from you. Nice to have you on the show.
Thank you for remembering me. Retired politician.
Went back into the old rolodex.
There we go.
Gordon, thanks very much. Gordon Price, former Vancouver City councillor and TransLink board member. It is 12:31 now, and you're with B.C. Today. I'm Michelle Elliott. Thank you very much for being with us. And you're joining us on Radio One, on CBC Television, live streaming as well. You can find us on the CBC News app or on our streaming service, or you can watch us on YouTube as well. Well, we'll continue to take your calls on this. Should we revisit congestion pricing here in B.C.? Given what New York has been doing since January 5th, some signs point to reduction in congestion as a result. So we'll find out whether it could work here from your point of view. And we're going to hear from the Surrey Board of Trade as well. They've been surveying their members on what are those transit and transportation needs. So we're going to hear from them and what they think about congestion pricing. That's all coming up after this CBC News update with Rob Zimmerman.
Good afternoon. As we've been hearing on the show, B.C.'s education minister has fired the entire Victoria School Board, saying that barring police from schools except in emergencies puts student safety at risk. Lisa Barris says she has appointed a lone trustee to oversee the district until the next municipal elections. Police have not been allowed at Victoria schools except in special circumstances since 2023, with the board saying it based its decision to ban officers on reports that some students and teachers, particularly those who are indigenous or people of color, don't feel safe with officers present in schools. The B.C. Civil Liberties Association has filed a lawsuit against the city of Vancouver, calling its daytime ban on outdoor sheltering a callous act of extreme cruelty. The advocacy group is challenging three city bylaws around the issue, claiming the city is violating the charter rights of unhoused people. And RCMP are renewing calls for information about a missing hunter in northeast B.C. 28-year-old Jim Barnes and his dog Murphy have been missing since October. Police now say DNA testing has confirmed that a dog found in December near Fort St. John is not Murphy, and the investigation is still active. And now the B.C. forecast on the North Coast, sunny this afternoon with a high of two, the temperature falling to minus 11 with a chance of flurries in the piece. In the central interior, including Prince George, a few flurries with highs around minus five, highs to minus two and mainly cloudy in the Kootenays. In the southern interior, including Kelowna, mainly cloudy with a high of plus two. And for Metro Vancouver, Greater Victoria and the Fraser Valley, cloudy with some rain and flurries at higher elevations and highs from four to seven degrees. That's your CBC News update from Vancouver.
Thank you so much, Rob.
You're welcome.
Rob Zimmerman in the CBC Vancouver newsroom. And you're with B.C. Today here on CBC Radio One. I'm Michelle Elliott. Very nice to be with you this afternoon. I hope you are not stuck in traffic right now. But yes, getting from point A to point B can be a predicament for both motorists and transit users. And as we've heard, people can be divided about having to chalk up extra dollars for smoother travels. The CBC's Gerpreet Campbell spoke to some people in downtown Vancouver about whether they would favor a congestion pricing plan similar to New York.
If you try to ride the 99B line first thing in the morning, you'll see that some of our routes, our public transit routes are already stretched to the max. So some extra funding for that would be good.
Thousand percent. I would have been happy about it, but compared to three hours of my day being miserable and anxious and stuck in traffic, yes, I would pay $6.
I don't think the traffic is bad enough here when you compare to London or New York. We're not that bad yet. So I would say not at this time.
Tell me about your experience in London.
I was there, I was living there for a couple of years just before congestion pricing came in. It certainly made getting around in downtown London much easier.
I'm not for it. I believe that we are paying taxes through the auto insurance for maintaining the infrastructure, which I don't think I've done a very good job. And no, I would not be in fear of it.
Let's continue our discussion on the idea of congestion pricing. Well, according to the traffic index that's put out by the traffic technology company TomTom, Vancouver is second only to New York City when it comes to the worst traffic congestion in North America. And of course, as we've been talking about, New York has a new congestion pricing program. It's been in place since January 5th. There are some signs it is working to ease that congestion, but it's also been contentious there as it has been here. The New York Times reporting today that U.S. President Donald Trump is considering pulling, putting a halt to that project. Well, we're asking you if we should revive the idea and the discussion around congestion pricing? As you heard from TransLink CEO Kevin Quinn, it's not on the table right now, but they are watching the New York example. Love to hear from you. You can hit pound 690 on your cell phone. You can also email us, bctoday@cbc.ca, asking you, should we revisit congestion pricing to ease traffic flow and fund transit improvements and transportation improvements as well? Well, Surrey is certainly a city that is plagued with traffic congestion issues and overcrowding on those buses. Now, today, the Surrey Board of Trade released a survey of businesses finding calls for infrastructure improvements to its roads and a need for rapid transit along King George Boulevard. Jasruth Gosol is interim spokesperson for the Surrey Board of Trade and joins us now. Good afternoon. Can you hear me, Jasruth? It sounds like Jasruth is unable to hear me right now. Let's try and reconnect with him and make sure that audio is working. My apologies for that. Jasruth, can you hear me? Not quite yet. Okay, let me take a call here as we try and fix our.
No, I can't.
Audio issues with Jasruth Gosol. That sounds like he can't hear us at the moment. Jill is on the line in Vancouver. And Jill, what are your thoughts then on congestion pricing?
Well, I think there, I'm not opposed to the idea of congestion pricing. I think that could be beneficial, but given the huge deficit in TransLink's operating budgets, there needs to be more than that. And one thing I really do not understand here is how we, the government at many levels gave huge rebates to people to buy Teslas, and then they pay nothing to use the roads. And I, I mean, what happens if we get to the point where we say had 80% of the vehicles on the road were electrical vehicles? Is it only going to be the 20% who can't afford to buy an electric vehicle that are stuck paying for all the road infrastructure? I mean, it just doesn't make any sense to me. They already got huge rebates. It's already the wealthy who can afford them. And then they get to drive and actually the batteries on those cars are so heavy in a Tesla, they do more damage to the roadways. So that's another thing we should be looking at, and they have to, you know, do what's fair for everybody. And anybody who's driving on the road should be paying to maintain the roads and contributing towards TransLink.
So rather than, yeah, rather than the fuel tax, find a way to apply that fee evenly across users. Yeah. Jill, yeah, great to hear from you. Thank you.
Thanks.
That's Jill in Vancouver. Brian is calling us now from Sydney. Hi, there, Brian.
Hi. So can you hear me okay?
Sure can. Yeah, go ahead.
A quick comment on just congestion in general. You know, when I moved here from Alberta, to town in Alberta, I saw on a road, three lanes of packed traffic and one lane that was completely empty. I didn't know what that was. And the people said, oh, that's a high occupancy lane.
Right.
The whole thing was empty. Yeah. And there was three lanes of completely stopped traffic on that road. And I thought to myself, why don't the people, maybe if they're going to the same area, why don't they maybe ride together in the car, one get one vehicle off the road, and two get into that high-speed lane?
Yeah.
And the people didn't really know what, my friends didn't know, well, they just, they don't seem to want to. And a friend of mine, Zerfink, he said there's a phenomenon called want satiation denial, meaning that I have so much freedom in my own vehicle that when I want something, I could have stopped the car, get in there and get what I want, as opposed to being stuck in a car with three other people that just want to get home.
Hmm.
When I get home, I've got to get in my own car, drive back towards the way I came and go to some supermarket and get that tub of cottage cheese for my recipe.
You've thought this through. So Brian, you're right, it's psychological. So how do we encourage more people to carpool and take advantage of that high-occupancy lane?
Yeah. An app called Carpool, that's C-A-R-P-O-O-L-L, on the App Store. And there's other apps I think out there that probably consider using, say, well, unless we get to know each other, maybe getting to know people in our neighborhood that we may see on the road with us or may work in the same building with.
Yeah.
Lots of little segues that we could look into to try to get people into the, you know, if we took three cars off the road, but them all in one.
Yeah.
It's hard to imagine what the roads would look like, because that's a three-quarter percent reduction in traffic.
Really interesting point, Brian, looking at.
We all have to work together.
Yeah. That opportunity for carpooling as an option. We actually, it's interesting, you mentioned the idea of freedom, people wanting something and seeing the car as a kind of freedom. Thanks so much for the call. Chris wrote us an email. Gordon Price said that cars are symbolic of freedom, but being clogged up in traffic jams is not freedom. Congestion pricing, or dynamic pricing, right, leads to less vehicles on the road, which can significantly reduce congestion, which is a real win for those that do still drive. And to the people thinking they pay enough through taxes, they do not. These people need to do their research. And finally, TransLink also oversees the major highway network and not just trains and buses. Where will all the money come for maintenance of all the infrastructure? So there'd be the difference there between, yeah, TransLink and then the city and then the province when it comes to the highways as well, right? So there are different jurisdictions when it comes to that. Thank you so much for that email. Really interesting point there, Chris. Let's try once again with Jasruth Gosol. Hi, Jasruth, can you hear me?
Hi, yes, I can.
Sure. Well, thank you very much for joining us again. Jasruth Gosol is the interim spokesperson for the Surrey Board of Trade. Now, you've just completed or released a survey looking at what your members feel are the transit and transportation needs in Surrey. Can you tell us about what you found?
Well, not surprisingly, actually, the Surrey Board of Trade membership, which includes business owners, employers, as well as employees and contractors, found that we do need more transit within Surrey connecting the city of Surrey together. Primarily, they are in support of at 69.3% of implementing and constructing rapid transit on King George Boulevard from city center down to South Surrey.
Can you tell us why? What's the need right now? How bad is it?
Well, in Surrey, we know that at this point in time, congestion is terrible. In addition to that, we know that there is extensive and long wait for buses, especially around the city center area and coming down King George Boulevard. And we know that in order to get people out of their cars and in transit buses or BRT or any other mode of transportation other than a single occupancy vehicle, we need to make sure that it is appropriate as well as people want to do it. So we have to make sure that it is attractive. And by implementing rapid transit on King George Boulevard in Surrey, we will likely see an increase in ridership.
Where should that funding come from?
Well, right now, we know that the federal government provided $663.7 million over 10 years to TransLink for capital projects such as the BRT line. But we also need to make sure that we get the operational funding for TransLink from the province.
From the province.
Because, from the province, correct, yeah. Without operational funding, we can construct all of these infrastructure projects, the new line, but who's going to operate them? We need bus drivers, we need maintenance staff, we need all of those other pieces to be funded.
What do you think of the idea of congestion pricing to fund these needs?
Well, congestion pricing, while it has worked in other areas, the Surrey Board of Trade doesn't believe it'll be a good fit for Metro Vancouver. We know that it will create some increased costs for businesses as a result of delivery drivers, trucks, et cetera, logistics companies, commuting employees, they will see an increase in cost and could have an impact on small businesses that rely on affordable transportation.
Let me just play for you a clip from UBC Soder School of Business professor Robin Lindsay, who takes a look at congestion pricing as a model.
What typically happens is that people become more favorable towards the congestion pricing when they see the benefits. Initially, they know there's going to be an out-of-pocket cost that's immediate, and they don't know what the benefits will be, and they may come sometime down the road. But then they find that their travel times are reduced and also more reliable. Again, just before I came on, there was reports about a crash in Coquitlam and also on the Portman Bridge. And the delays there are going to be a function of how much traffic there is. So if you reduce the traffic on average, you're also going to reduce the variations, which can be a real concern for people if they have to get to work at a particular time, get to the airport, get to an important meeting, and so on.
Again, that's Robin Lindsay, a professor at UBC Soder School of Business. So Jasruth, as you say, this is going, congestion pricing would have an impact on small businesses in Surrey, but would that not be short-lived? And would there not be long-term benefit that would help businesses in Surrey deal with the problems that you've raised?
Well, while it may be short-lived, we do need to make sure that we have the transit infrastructure in place to, for the people that aren't going to be driving anymore, for them to have an alternative mode of transportation. And at this point in time, especially south of the Fraser, where we have been starved of investment in transportation infrastructure, we have to build that out first. And in order to do that, we move investment from all levels of government. We want us to work together to find these solutions. And we need to make sure that we implement a technology that is cost-effective as well as feasible to operate in the long run as well. So without those pieces, yeah.
So pardon me. So you're saying that if people are being charged or taxed for driving in and around Surrey, there is, and if they're dissuaded from doing that, there's no alternative at the moment?
Exactly. And the city of Surrey is so large geographically, without adequate transit and other alternative modes of transportation, people are still going to be driving and increasing costs and leading to potentially affordability challenges as well.
How likely is it that the province will come through with that operational funding? What we've heard from TransLink still is that they are still looking at this funding gap of about $600 million each. gap of about 600 million dollars each year and, uh, again, looking at, uh, they say transit service cuts that might be necessary.
Well, we are going to be speaking with Minister Farmworth, uh, in about, uh, 10 minutes here for an event. And so hopefully we'll be able to get some sort of commitment and, uh, maybe see something in the next budget that will, uh, will prevent, uh, TransLink from having to implement these cuts, which would be disastrous for not only residents, but, uh, the economy and the business community.
Okay, it sounds like it's a busy day then, uh, on the, on the transit front. Really appreciate you taking the time with us. Thanks so much and for your patience as well, uh, during our technical problems.
No problem. I just mind.
Take care. Jasruth Gosal is interim spokesperson for the Surrey Board of Trade. Let's go back to your calls on this now and again, asking you, should we revisit the idea of congestion pricing to get around Metro Vancouver, to ease the congestion and to fund public transit and transportation improvements? Alfred is joining us now from White Rock. Hi Alfred, welcome to the show.
Hello, thank you very much for taking my call.
What are your thoughts?
Well, my thoughts are, uh, I have a number of thoughts, but my main thought is we want to get people out of their cars. And I worked for a company down in the U S at one time when I got laid off and I was working for the airline industry here. They had a very good incentive program to get people out of their cars. The number one thing is they had to give them some type of incentive and that incentive was they would pay part of their transit cost if they got out of their cars. Mainly because there was not very much parking downtown and it's the same issue as in Vancouver. If the company that you're looking for does not provide parking for you, you have to pay that out of pocket.
Right.
And, and the idea here is to get people out of their cars and make them, and get them to use transit and make transit affordable for them to do that. And I don't see that happening here in the lower mainland because the outlying area out here in White Rock is expanding like you wouldn't believe. And it, it takes almost longer to get out of, out of White Rock to get onto Highway 99 than it does to drive in Vancouver.
You know, it-
So the idea-
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Pardon me.
Uh, the idea is to get people out of their cars and if they, and if they, if they continue to drive, the companies downtown are going to have to provide parking for all these people that are driving.
Yeah.
So-
So carrot, not a stick.
Pardon?
A carrot, not a stick.
Exactly.
Give it incentive.
Exactly.
Alfred, really good to hear from you and you bring a great point up, right? That, uh, White Rock is expanding, as you said, we see this need for housing, um, and the province, uh, calling on municipalities to build more housing around transit, but, um, you know, to what extent is there going to be that level of service to meet new residents along those lines? Asking you about congestion pricing as a possible solution. Uh, we heard from the CEO of TransLink saying that's not on the table right now. They're watching what's happening in New York. And so in New York, there's a new congestion pricing program that's been in place since January 5th. There have been some observations that it has slowed down or eased the congestion, but, uh, the future of this program is in question as, uh, the President Donald Trump has said that he is, um, uh, that it is something that he opposes. So let's take some more calls from you. You can hit pound 690 on your cell phone. And, uh, I'm so glad to welcome another caller from Surrey now. Hi Clayton.
Hi, how are you?
I am well and, and tell us what, what your thoughts are on congestion pricing.
I think congestion pricing is, uh, a complete, uh, no-go. Um, just mostly because we don't have transit that supports people as it is. We certainly don't have the population, uh, size that these other cities like London and New York, uh, have. And we certainly don't have a transit system even remotely close to supporting as those, you know, two cities do. We have absolutely not enough transit to support the population. We have not enough, uh, uh, routes that are dedicated for buses only. So even if they brought in congestion pricing, traffic will still be gridlocked because the roads just aren't large enough for one. And even though you have congestion pricing, you're still going to have vehicles. People aren't going to get rid of their vehicles 100% just because they're paying a, a, a fee, uh, to, to, to go into Vancouver. And the complexity of charging these fees would be nothing but a nightmare considering our government can't manage anything, let alone, you know, the bureaucracy would require to manage these fees. If I'm driving from Surrey to Abbisford, how are they going to monitor that fee? Is it going to be, you know, uh, it, it, it just seems like, it just seems like, uh, pushing our button to see if we're receptive to it because they're afraid of losing revenue from gas tax. And unfortunately, they haven't done anything to even alleviate the traffic as it is now. So it doesn't matter which municipality you're driving in, the, the traffic is horrendous because the transit itself is horrendous. And we don't have enough rapid transit supporting outlying areas. So by putting in these fees without any of this stuff serving anybody, um, you're literally pigeonholing everybody into paying the fee. So why not just charge everybody the fee on their car insurance for however many, which they've already talked about anyway? And even if they do, the transit plans that they put in place are completely brainless. That's my opinion.
Clayton, thank you very much. Very, it's sort of similar to what we heard from Mr. Gosal over at the Board of Trade, that if you're going to charge people, there's not an alternative at the moment. So are you just going to see people paying, um, at the, and, and in that case then, at least for the short term, not alleviating, alleviating congestion? And, and just to be clear, at this point, there has been, uh, no, no talk at the Ministry of Transportation here and at TransLink, um, as we heard from the CEO, that it's, it's not on the table. What we have heard is some experts saying, look at the example in New York, this is something that we should be considering. Uh, Adam is our last caller on this from Vancouver. Hi Adam.
Hi, how's it going?
Really well, thanks for calling in. What are you, what, do you think we should talk about congestion pricing again? We are talking about it today, but should we revisit the idea?
Sure. So, uh, yeah, first off, um, you know, my name's Adam Hawk. I was the Vancouver, uh, uh, South Granville candidate for the B C Greens in the last election for M L A. And, uh, you know, the Greens have a lot of great ideas and, uh, you know, as do I and, uh, some of them are not that crazy expensive. You know, the first thing that we really need is dedicated bus lanes. There's a, an organization called Movement Y V R, uh, in Vancouver that is all about getting reserved lanes for buses, you know, because the traffic, whether it's one lane or two, if there's a bottleneck, everybody's sitting in traffic. But if you have one lane during rush hour for buses only, those buses are moving hundreds of people. So, you know, that is cheap, that is way cheaper than building any kind of Skytrain or, you know, that kind of infrastructure. Buses are versatile, you can move them around, you know, but if you have these lanes that don't cost much to install, because it's just, you know, it's a lane with a, it's with a sign and a, you know, some paint on the road and, you know, you, and some enforcement, keeping, keeping drivers out of them during rush hour.
And could improve, um, transit service and frequency there as well. Adam, I'm sorry, I do have, do have to jump in. Interesting, that actually goes to what Gordon Price said, which is, uh, look at the bus system, um, because as he said, people do appreciate that. Thank you so much for the call, Adam. Really good to hear from you. Uh, thank you for all of your calls and all of your emails too. Again, it's bctoday@cbc.ca.